All right, being seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Stand for applause allegiance, please. Applause allegiance. Dan Stich, America.
And to the Republicans for which we stand.
One nation under God. Good will. Rule call's been taken. Move to adopt the agenda with amendments to line nine, 10, and 11 of the removal of nine, 10, and 11.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Lori Dean, seconded by Tom O'Connell. Any further additions or corrections? Please cast your ballots.
You gotta clear it first. Third time's the charm.
Sorry, everyone.
Motion pass. Approval of September 8th, 2020, council minutes, October 1st, 2020, special council minutes. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Fred Zog, seconded by Lori Dean. Any other further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion pass, motion carried by eight. Authorization to pay bills in the amount of 808,000. Mr. Morak, you bring that one together.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move we pay bills in the amount of 808,880 dollars and 78 cents.
Second.
Motion been made by Dave, seconded by Mr. Herter. Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Authorization to pay bills in the amount of 808,880 dollars and 78 cents. Please cast your ballots. Motion carried.
Oh, sorry.
All right, being 7:05, we'll open the public hearing for your ordinance to designate ATV, UTV routes in the city of New London. Chief.
Your Honor, I'd just like to address the court real quick on this. I'd like to ask them that if they decide to pass this tonight, that they would consider just doing the start date on April 1st for a couple of reasons. One, it would reduce any sort of confusion as our ordinance talks about when signs are posted all up. It'd be easier to just say April 1st, be done with it. Plus, there's a very good likelihood that by the time the signs are made and installed, we might be past the December 15th period anyways. It also gives us a chance to get all of our officers trained and up to date on the rules of the ATVs. So that would just be my request that we set a date of April 1st to start the ordinance if it passes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll move on to public input. Any public input? All right, hearing none, we'll keep on rolling. Standing in special committees, Board of Public Works, Mr. Barrington.
Thank you. Board of Public Works. Met on Monday, October 5th, 2020. Meeting was called, ordered at 4:30. First item was wastewater treatment plant facility update. We looked at that, there was no questions or concerns. Motion, everything was taken care of. The next item was considered for action, an agreement to accept aerobic treatment sludge from Amra Wastewater Treatment Facility. And Grue will explain that the treated sludge from the city of Amra Wastewater Treatment Facility has been tested and found this product will capture a good amount of methane gas which will be used as a financial benefit for the facility digester boilers. Motion made and seconded to accept this. Motion carried. unanimous. The next item was to discuss and act on ordinance adjusting sewer rate changes. A draft ordinance was presented increasing the monthly sewer rate charge from $4 to $5 per month. The increase was proposed to slowly bring the monthly charge in line with other surrounding community communities. The last monthly sewer rate increase was in 2019. Motion made and seconded to approve this ordinance. This will be brought to council tonight. The next item was to review tabulation and recommend awarding asphalt paving contract. The board received a proposed tabulation for asphalt patching in several locations throughout the city. Mr. Hirth recommended awarding the 2020 asphalt patching proposal contract to the lower proposal Midstate Asphalt. Motion made and seconded, was carried, that'll be brought to council tonight. The next item was to review brush and compost material collection procedures and location. A discussion continued from last month's board meeting regarding the collection of compost and brush material at the site south of the wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Hirth reported that the staff is researching options to allow collection of brush after hours, but also to keep the treatment plant operations separate and secure. Recommendations will be brought to the board for consideration at a future meeting. No action taking on that. Director's report was included in the agenda packet and reviewed by the committee. Service anniversaries, there were no service anniversaries to report. Next month's agenda items, street light at the corner of Dickerson and Pearl Street, and then brush and compost material collection options. Recessed the meeting and transported to the London wastewater treatment plant. We toured the wastewater treatment plant, starting at 5:15. We went through it and we ended up at 6:36. Their meeting was adjourned. To bring to council tonight, I've got a couple items. The first is the second reading to adopt an ordinance to designate ATV, UTV routes in the city of New London.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Are you guys gonna consider that start date?
Yeah, we're, sorry, we'll consider the start date. What'd you say, April 1st?
April 1st.
All right.
So motion's been made and seconded by Dave Morak.
Dennis.
Oh, Dennis, excuse me. To adopt an ordinance to design, to designate ATV, UTV routes in the city of New London and to open April 1st of 2021. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots.
This is John, I vote aye.
Thank you, John. Motion passes six to three.
Next item is bring the, an ordinance amending the sewer monthly rate changes from $4 to $5. This would take effect January 1st, 2021. Second.
Who seconded that? Thanks, Bob. Motion's been made and seconded by Bob Bissah. For the ordinance amending sewer monthly rate fees from $4 to $5. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots.
This is John, I vote aye.
Fred, or Tom?
I don't know, I keep voting and it don't work.
You hit absent. He hit staying at, or...
Well, you hit him, staying at, no.
Oh, there it is, Fred, it was Fred. Motion carried.
Tom's not on there. I'm still absent.
Oh, you voted absent.
Ask what his vote is. What's that? Voice, the modus votus.
Please, voice vote. Tom.
Voice vote.
Voice vote, because you put on absent there. No? Motion carried. Seven yes, two no.
Okay, I move to bring to council to award the asphalt patching contract to Midstate Asphalt. This was the lowest of two bids.
Second. Motion been made and seconded by Mr. Zog. To award asphalt patching contract to Midstate Asphalt. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. John?
Me, John. I vote aye.
Motion carried.
And that's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Passes.
No, you're already in.
Thank you, Mr. Barrington. Move on to finance and personnel, Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, October 7th at 4:30 PM in the council chambers and via Zoom. There was a general discussion on the downtown lighting. The downtown project has a 2024 anticipated start date, and the current lighting on Pearl Street is in need of replacement in the near future. Since the city currently has not decided the direction of the downtown lighting and would like to get input from residents and downtown businesses, it was a general consensus that utility manager Jason Bassett would use breakaway bases that could be used on Shawno Street. Therefore, if the bases are not compatible with the direction the city decides to go with the downtown lighting, they can still be utilized on Shawno Street. Motion was made by Fache and seconded by Darcy to recommend the council approval of a new liquor license for Cruz Inn. Motion carried eight zero. Motion was made by Fache and seconded by Darcy to recommend the council approval of new election officials for the November 3rd election. Motion carried eight zero. Finance Director Ratkey presented an update on the closure of the Economic Development Fund. Letters were sent out to the residents in the targeted area for the potential road projects on Lion, Lima, and Avon Streets. Mrs. Ratkey will be bringing this continuing discussion back to the November finance meeting to discuss the financial amount for the closure and whether the city wants to include a current loan in that closure. There are 27 pay periods in the year 2021, so we'll be dividing the salary employees by an additional pay period. Finance Director Ratkey reviewed the monthly financial reports. The financial director's report was discussed. There being no public comment or further business, the meeting is adjourned at 5:25 PM. The next regularly scheduled finance meeting will be held in the council chambers on Wednesday, November 4th at 4:30 PM. Then, I move we award the sale of $2,355,000 General Obligation Corporate Purpose Bonds Series 2028.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded by Dennis Herter.
We may have Phil Cosson. You have some additional information or whatever?
How you doing, sir?
Very good, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Phil Cosson with Ellers. I'm a half of a familiar face to most of you. For those who don't know who I am, I've been around for a while working with the city and a couple of capacities, primarily as the assisting city staff with numerous financial, financial bond issues over the years, along with analysis on tax increment districts and other things. So today, I'd like to walk through the two, if it's okay, I'll go through both sale results, or would you like to take one at a time that occurred?
Um, yeah, one at a time, please.
All right, we'll start with, there's a handout that's been provided to you. There's two documents, and it's the top document is the General Obligation Corporate Purpose Bonds Series 2028, $2,355,000. I'll walk through that with you right now. So, last month, I participated virtually, and at that time, you gave us authorization to proceed with the financing of these projects that have been identified in your capital list. So procedurally, what occurs after you give us authorization is that we work with city staff, putting together what's called an official statement of prospectus on the city, that we then send out to potential bidders on the bonds, and I'll go through who bid today and what the winning rates were. At the same time, we go through a rating call with Moody's Investor Service, the city and the utility are both rated, and so we have to go through the process of a call with them and go through an analysis with them as to your current rating. So we went through that process as well. The rating report is also attached in this document, and I'll touch on that as well with you. So, at 10 o'clock today, we took bids after we had all that information compiled, and we took bids at 10 o'clock, and we received five bids, which is about what we'd expect, anywhere from three to five bids on this size issue. So if you go to the first page in this document, as a reminder of what we're financing, it's fire departments, street improvements, police facilities, parks, public grounds, engine house and library projects. Some of this is the roof of this facility as well. So it's a variety of projects that we are, that we are going through and financing. So we received five bids today. The winning bid was from BOK Financial Securities out of Milwaukee. BOK is an offshoot, for those who've been around for a while, M&amp;I Bank, guys that used to work at M&amp;I Bank, and then they, for a period of time, worked for another financial institution, then they worked for, now for BOK out of Milwaukee still, and I'd say are one of the more active banks involved in purchasing debt issues in the state of Wisconsin. So there were the winning bid. I'll have the other bids in a little bit, I'll walk through that. Their bid for a 20-year bond issue was 1.7009%, so 1.070%. The high bid of the five was 1.9138%. The difference between the two is $70,000, and that's what we represent there. So, good rates and a lot of, a lot of bidders. So if you go to the second and third pages, these are the, again, the bids and who actually bid. Again, BOK Financial Securities was the winning bid, and they bid what is called a premium bid, which is very common for what we see. And a premium says that they're gonna, they actually provide you with more money than you request, and in return, you're able to use that money, you'll see that on both these issues. You're able to use that money to either downsize, reduce the amount of the obligation, or you can retain some of those funds for cost overruns or other projects that you may have down the road. In this case, it was only, it was a relatively small amount of money, it was $23,000. It's retained, so you have an additional $23,000 in project costs that can be used, and it's, where we targeted it right now was really in the street fund. So it'll go really towards street projects. The winning bid is on page two, and if you flip the page, you'll see the other bids that were received as well. Baird out of Milwaukee at 1.7746%. Bernardi Securities out of Chicago. Northland Securities out of Minneapolis, and Bankers Bank out of Madison were the bidders. All five very familiar to us that we see bid on a regular basis. But again, I just wanna kind of put in perspective, 1.70% for 20 years is what you're borrowing money at. I've been doing this a long time. Many, about seven, eight years ago, I was, I was in a highly rated community, very highly rated, double A-plus community, and the, their bonds came in at 2%, and I said, "We'll never ever see this again." And now we're seeing it on a weekly basis with rates as low as they are. So, really historically low rates. On, on the fourth page is kind of the, in the yellow, it's hard, relatively hard to see, is the, is all the final numbers as it pertains to this issue. But what you'll see in here is that, if you look at the, the first subtotal, subtotal project costs, that's where that extra $23,000. Yes, sir?
I'd give back to your other, the bidding before, is there ever a reason that you don't accept the lower, the lower bid?
We, well, if there was a, if there would be a reason, it would be possibly that they didn't forward what's, there's, everybody that sets up the bid has to actually provide a deposit, a fund deposit, and they get it back if they don't win. It would be something to do with that, but no, we've never seen a case where you would not take the low bid. All reputable firms, I mean, if they weren't, they wouldn't be set up to bid, they wouldn't have the good faith deposit. It's just not something that we see.
Thank you.
Certainly. So in the yellow again is the final deal, about $23,000 of additional project costs as indicated versus what was authorized. That'll be retained. Where that money really comes from is some of the project costs, the actual costs come in, less than what's identified. In the middle of the page, there is something called underwriters premium, and that's where some of that premium money has to go as well. Where it's going in this case is it's going into a debt service fund, and it's going to pay interest on these bonds in '21 and '22. That'll be all factored into your budget when Judy works through that with you as to how that comes into play, but there's some money that got put into the debt service fund as well. So, if you recall, we're not just looking at this issue, we're looking at this issue along with understanding that out in around 2024, there's gonna be a larger issue for, for some road projects that we wanted to at least provide as kind of a pigeonhole in here. We wanted to make sure that it was accounted for when we looked at the structure of this debt issue and the structure of future debt issues. And so, in this document, you'll see towards the bottom of page five, where we ended up was about $71,000 to the bidder versus what we had projected for rates. So that's total principal and interest. In addition to that, you have the $23,000 of additional project costs. So we came in a little bit better than projected. We, we expect rates to be relatively low right now. We're in the market every day selling bonds, so we didn't build a lot of room in here. We tried to be pretty close to what our expectations were for this issue. On page six of this is that longer range look, where we're not just looking at this issue, we're also looking at an issue out in 2024, and that issue size is pretty substantial, a little over $6 million. No one's committing you to that at this time, but we want to make sure we're accounting for the fact that there are projects in the future that you're gonna need to deal with, and as such, we want to kind of build it into the plan, and that's what we've done here. So our goal here over the next number of years is really not to have any increase in your debt service levy, even though we're taking on this debt. Over the next three years, we really don't expect any change in your debt service levy that's meaningful at all. We expect it to be really the same in '21 all the way through '24. Once you take on that other debt issue, there will be an impact, and we'll deal with that at that time, but we are accounting for that at this point. So really no increase in your debt service levy in 2021. Attached after that is a rather lengthy rating report, and I'm just gonna highlight a few items. First of all, you retained your A1 rating. So before this debt issue was taken out, the city was rated at A1. Now that it's, we've gone through this process, even with this existing debt, new debt coming on, they've identified the same A1 rating. There is pressure, obviously, with COVID, law, potential loss of revenues to municipalities. There are pressures from rating agencies to look at downgrades at this point. So good news here, you were, you're identified as retaining your A1 rating. On the second page of this rating report, which is really page eight of this handout, they've identified credit strengths, credit weaknesses, or challenges, as they call them, and then what could change your rating going forward. So what they've identified for strengths have not changed in your case. One, very strong fund balance and liquidity. Gotta have a fund balance, a rainy day fund, working capital fund, whatever you call it, that in case of emergencies, you have, you have some funds to tap into. You've always been pretty stable in having that fund out there. They acknowledge that. That's really number one when it comes to a rating for Moody's and S&amp;P. They want to make sure you have a strong fund balance. Manageable pension burden, that is really the case throughout the state of Wisconsin, minus one or two places we're not gonna talk about in the state, but you have a very manageable pension liability compared to other credits. Now remember, they're comparing you not just to Wisconsin credits, but also to nationwide, similar rated communities. Credit challenges, modestly sized tax base, again, comparing you not just to Wisconsin, but also nationally. Above average debt burden. Now Judy called and said, "Why do they write that? We have very little debt." And I said, "Because you're in the state of Wisconsin, and you have very few options available to you in how you can raise capital." You go to Illinois, you can, you can issue bonds that are sales tax-backed, and a number of other options that are out there don't have that in Wisconsin. So we, we always look at, we're also looked at as having a little bit of an elevated debt profile from a general obligation standpoint. And then limited revenue raising flexibility, that's levy limits, and that's in every credit report in the state of Wisconsin as well. What can move to upgrade? Tax-based growth, diversification, and downgrade is if you really start rating your fund balance. They will look at a downgrade at that point. So all in all, kind of a rating report that we fully expected to see. I thought it was gonna be affirmed, it was affirmed, and we didn't have any surprises. So all in all, I think a really great sale, five bidders with very attractive prices.
So we're back to, motion's been made and seconded by Dennis. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots.
John, I vote aye.
Motion carried by all.
Thank you, Your Honor. Then I move we pass resolution, supplementing Resolution Number 698 as amended, authorizing the issuance and awarding the sale of $3,295,000 Sewage Water and Electric System Mortgage Revenue Refunding Bonds Series 2020B of the city of New London, out of game in Wapaka Counties, Wisconsin, and providing for the payment of the bonds and other details with respect to the bonds.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded by Zog? Yep. And this, you want to take it over again?
Yep, thank you. I'll maybe try to be the last one win this time. Well, this is really great news for the utility, which also, when we talk about the utility, it's a combined utility. Many years back, and you know, Steve Thompson, before he retired, told me this story many years back, that the reason you have a combined utility, water, sewer, and electric, is many years back, the water and electric utility were kind of helping to support the sewer utility, many years back, when you did the treatment plant. Well, what happens when you pledge all of that together, it becomes one pledge when it comes to bond issues. And you issued subsequent debt issues along the way, and you always had to have the same pledge. So it kind of carried forward year after year, even though the city really kind of handles the sewer utility, and water and electric is dealt with by the utility, they're a combined utility when we come to bond issues, okay? So today, again, at 10 o'clock, we took bids. Here, there's no new money being issued. We're refinancing a 2011 existing issue purely for... We're refinancing a 2011 existing issue purely for savings. Think about it, your home mortgage, you refinance it at a lower rate, same concept here. Same number of, here we have a rating of A3. I will say, I spent more time with the analysts about this rating because I think A3 is maybe a tad on the low side for the utility. They think there's upward pressure and possibly a move to A2 in the future as well, but they're very reluctant right now on moving anybody up because of a fear for collection of revenue from companies and individuals. So with that, there's a little bit of concern, but I think there's a good upward pressure here for a potential upgrade in the future. Five bids, BOK Financial won this as well. This is a relatively short issue, 10 years. The low bid was .8725%, so under 1% for 10 years. High bid, I don't know why, was at 2.2339, kind of way off base. You'll see the other bids are all kind of in line. The difference between the high and low bid is $261,000, really substantial. If you go to page, the net, the page two, other, under the bid tabulation, this is the actual bids that were received. BOK Bankers, Northland, Baird, all four of them bid on the GO, and then Huntington Securities out of Chicago threw in a bid of 2.2339%, which is obviously way off the mark here. As I indicated, the reason we're doing this is one purpose, and that was save money. So we got a premium bid here as well. They gave you more money again than you requested. In this case, what we're able to do is use that money and reduce the amount of debt. So on your agenda, it says $3,295,000. I don't have your agenda in front of me. What we're going to ask you to authorize tonight is $3,135,000, the lower amount, because again, we reduce the amount of the obligation that's outstanding. So $3,135,000 is the actual amount that we're asking you to authorize tonight. So what we had projected for rates versus actual, the difference came in about $113,000 to the better. And right before the Moody's report on page five is the preliminary savings that we showed in the final that we are realizing. The preliminary savings that we had shown was $528,000, roughly $50,000 a year is kind of what we're expecting. Now, what that means for the utility is when it comes to budget time, starting at '21, that's $50,000 they don't have to budget for, right, right from the get-go. It, it helps their overall budget. In actuality, in the yellow column under final in '21, it's almost $65,000. The actual savings was $643,000, so roughly $60,000 to $65,000 a year, quite a bit better than what we had projected. We look at things in a present value savings analysis. What percent of the outstanding bonds are being saved by doing this? It's 15% in this case. We would have recommended doing this at 3%, and we're at 15%. So it's really great news for the utility. Again, not just water and electric, but sewer as well. So really great news. The rating report is attached here as well. Page seven, they identify the same kind of strengths and challenges. Solid debt service coverage. Debt service coverage is this, how much revenue do you have after O&amp;M costs to be able to pay for debt? That, that's debt service coverage, and you have a very strong debt service coverage. You have, under its credit strengths, power cost adjustment that helps mitigate increases, purchase power, challenges. You have some concentration in the food industry a little bit, and then also you have some limited rate setting authority, they're just referencing the PSE for the water utility. Otherwise, you're, you're pretty easily covered. So really just great news for the utility, saving around $65,000 a year, each year. There's a bond chart on the last page, kind of giving you a feel for what's happened over the last, rough, over the last year in the bond market. So that'll be, kind of sum up my comments again. A3 rating, which is what you had before, much better than expected savings, which will just help budget time.
Thank you, sir.
And Your Honor, I would change that then to $3,135,000 in the motion, rather than $3,295.
I was wondering.
Motion been made and seconded by Mr. Zog for resolution supplementing resolution number 698 as amended, authorizing the issuance and awarding the sale of $3,135,000 sewage, water, and electric system mortgage revenue refunding bonds, series 2020B of City of New London, Outagame and Wapaka Counties, Wisconsin, and providing for the payment of the bonds and other details with respect to the bonds. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried by all.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Your Honor, I'd really like to thank Phil Cossen and Ellers for the terrific job they do with supporting the City of New London. They've been really there supporting us.
I appreciate that. I would, I'd like to also make a comment because I, sometimes negligent in acknowledging, you know, we prepare a lot of documents on your half, but most of that information comes from your city staff. And you have a very good city staff that works very hard in getting information to us timely and participating in all the calls to make sure this goes smooth. So we need, they're the backbone, and we need their help to prepare all this, so I wanted to thank them as well.
Thank you for the compliment, and we'll be sure to pass that along.
Okay, then I move, we approve the list of election officials for the November 3rd
Motion been made and seconded by Mr. Barrington to approve the list of election officials for November 3rd election. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
Then I move, we approve the license list for October as presented.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded by Dave Dorsey. To approve the license list? Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all. And that's all you have, Dave?
Yes, I have, thank you, Your Honor, for finance.
Thank you, Dave. Move on to city administrator ad hoc committees, and I'll read both reports from them. City Administrator Hiring Group minutes for Thursday, September 17th, 2020. Herter called the meeting to order at 2:00 PM. Zog moved to approve the agenda, seconded by O'Connell, motion carried by all. Barrington moved to go into closed session, seconded by Morak. Motion carried by all at 2:05 PM. The two applicants were interviewed by the members present. Moved by Morak, seconded by Zog, to reconvene into open session at 5:42 PM, carried by all. There was no action or statement from the closed session. Moved by Mr. Fache, seconded by Zog, to adjourn. Motion carried by all, meeting adjourned at 5:45 PM. Second reading, city administrator hiring group met Thursday, September 24th. Herter called the meeting to order at 4:00 PM. Morak moved to approve the agenda, seconded by O'Connell, motion carried by all. Zog moved to go into closed session, seconded by Dorsey, motion carried by all at 4:03 PM. Moved by O'Connell, seconded by Dorsey, to reconvene into open session at 4:47 PM, carried by all. Fache and O'Connell to recommend to council to offer the city administrative position to Chad Hirth, carried by all. Pending council approval, authorization for the mayor and council president to conduct the background check and negotiate a contract with Mr. Hirth was moved by Mr. Fache, seconded by Zog, carried by all. Moved by Barrington, seconded by Dorsey, to adjourn, motion carried by all, meeting adjourned at 5:03 PM. That's all for the city ad hoc committee for now. Move on to park and recreation, Mr. Beesaw.
Thank you, Your Honor. October Park and Rec Committee met October 6th. Meeting was called to order at 4:45. Being moved to approve the agenda, seconded by Dennis Herter, motion carried by all. Public comment relevant to items on the agenda, there was none presented. Discuss on updating the city's comprehensive outdoor recreation plan corp. Tish Knaw from East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission provided an overview of the online public survey that was released and the progress of updating the city's comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. The corp plan provides direction and is required if the city would like to apply for any DNR stewardship grants. The next steps include developing SWAT analysts and building goals. No motion was made on this item at this time. Consider request for hunting at 1112 Mulligan Drive. The committee heard from Justin Brinkman regarding request to hunt on his property at 1112 Mulligan Drive. Brinkman explained that he would like to hunt animals that are damaging his property. Chad Harth and Chief Schlitter reviewed aerial maps and inspected the property. Due to the close proximity of neighboring buildings, they both recommended denying the request at this time. Motion was made and seconded, denied the motion, nine to one, to request the hunting request. Discuss the request promoting off-road trail on the south side of Flora Hill Cemetery. Sacree Howard approached the committee and led a discussion in developing and promoting the city's property south of Flora Hill Cemetery for non-motorized mountain biking. Several members of the cemetery commission were also present to provide the cemetery commission's input on the idea. The general consensus, consensus of the committee agreed that it was a good idea to investigate the possibilities and ask Howard to do some research in creating and organizing a group of individuals to assist in planning and possible future development of the site. No motion was made on this item at this time. Discuss opinions or options to develop New London as a kayaking destination. Discussion took place on future plans to promote New London as a kayaking destination. Simple shared a video he created showcasing the great kayaking opportunities around the London. This video will be, will be released to the public in spring of 2021. No motion made, was made on this item at this time. And review options for dock improvements at the Riverside Park boat launch. Chad Harth provided information on plans to improve docks at the Riverside Boat Park boat launch and other sites in the city. Cost estimates are being collected to replace older docks and to add kayak launches. No motion was made on this item at this time. Directors report and memo, service anniversary reports. Mike Frieden, senior transit driver, completed 11 years of service on September 21st. Patrick Guyatt completed six years of service on September 22nd. Committee members report, there was none presented. Future agenda items toward the south side of Flora Hill Cemetery, Riverside boat launch ticket machines and launch fees. Continue discussing kayaking opportunities. Bob Marks moved to adjourn, seconded by Fred Zog, meeting adjourned at 6:30. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Beesaw. We'll move on to planning commission. There was no September meeting, so we'll keep rolling. We'll go to economic development committee, Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. The economic development committee met on Tuesday, September 29th, at 4:30 PM in the New London City Council on via Zoom. The 20, August 25th, 2020 minutes were approved. David Thiel and Bill Zeinert presented new Claritas marketing analysis data recently obtained by the Wapaka County Economic Development Corporation. Zeinert explained that the Claritas information gives insight into personal lifestyle trends and then categorizes households into social groups. The presentation provided a summary of which social groups are currently living in and around New London. One goal with this information would be to use it to understand what purchasing trends appeal to those in the county and how we could use that data to attract and retain working class families in the county. Thiel and Zeinert will assist the city moving forward and analyzing the data further in the city's future marketing efforts. The committee briefly reviewed report Todd Hutchinson provided to the city last month regarding the downtown riverfront development and recommendation Hutchinson provided in moving forward, reinforcing the idea that constant marketing is extremely important to keep your name in front of potential developers. The committee thanked Hutchinson for his work in creating the report and suggestions for future planning. One recommendation that Hutchinson report suggested was to develop TIF guidelines to provide developers an understanding of the city's commitment using TIF funds. Finance Director Ratkey researched and developed a draft TIF guidelines document for the committee to review. Zog motion, seconded by Asman, to recommend that council consider adopting the TIF guidelines as presented, carried by all. Kepitski researched and presented a document summarizing some initiatives in promoting workforce development and business recruitment in New London. Many of the initiatives the city has worked on in some capacity, but may have opportunities for future development to gain additional success. Chairman Mark reiterated the need for regular contact and communication the city administrator and staff will need to have with businesses now and in the future. The committee agreed and felt asking the question, what can the city do to help local business is important. Mayor Herter led a discussion about feedback from the community on the closing of a local grocery store and commentary on social media requesting the city to do something to replace that service. The committee discussed the possibilities of taking a more active role and seeking out specific types of businesses to bring additional growth into the community. Kepitski provided a business update, including details on some business closings, building purchases, and relocations. Hirth provided a report of downtown businesses who took advantage of the building facade improvement program and noted that the program is closed for 2020 as the committee used some of the funds for the COVID-19 small business grant program. Kepitski mentioned that for future agenda items, she would report on the progress of the downtown development subcommittee. Under public input, Gerald Magalski suggested talking to Walmart about bringing in Walmart neighborhood market. Scott Black, district administrator for the New London School District, commented about working together with the city to fill student positions that sit on the various city committees. Meeting then adjourned at 6:17 PM. Then I would move that we approve the City of New London TIF guidelines.
Motion been made and seconded by Mr. Zog to approve the City of New London TIF guidelines. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
You, you also have a copy of the Wapaka County Economic Development Corporation monthly report for September, and that's all I have for economic development, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Morak. Next, we'll move on to minutes and reports. You guys should all have them in your packet. Stand as read. Move on to reports of officers on recent events and announcements to the public, leading off with the mayor's report. I'd like to make the appointment of Kelly Rickett to the tourism commission. And to go along with that, I'd like to just remind everybody in the city to please continue to shop locally and visit our local restaurants and, and help spread the, the funds around to keep our businesses intact in New London as they go through our partial shutdown in the state. I appreciate that. We'll move on to the city clerk, she's not here with the elections. We'll move on to the city clerk, she is not here with the elections. Chad, did she leave any, okay.
Just want to remind, Michelle, can you remind me what days the in-person voting starts?
October 20th through October 30th, from 8:00 to 4:30. We have extended hours on the 20th, the 21st, the 27th, and the 28th until 6:30 PM.
Thank you, Michelle. Move on to the utility manager, Mr. Bessett.
Thank you, Your Honor. The utilities have been extremely busy this last month. Water crews are fixing leaking and broken valves. They've done Shawno and Cook Street, Warren and Dexter, Quincy Street, Robin Street, Oriole Street, Smith and Martin, and Pine and Ridgeway. They tapped a new service on September 21st at 629 East Beckett Road. They've also been doing maintenance at our wellhouses, and they finished painting well number three, that's Beacon Street. If you guys drive by there, it looks really nice, they did a good job. Water crews flushed hydrants for the first time in a year on October 5th through the 8th. They had one main break due to flushing, and that was on Shawno Street by Take 5 Oil Change. Electric crews installed URD services at 105 Zachary Court, 1018 Manasha, 1806 Wyman, and are working on Division Street by Steel King. They're going to remove that three-phase overhead line behind there that used to feed the old VFW, I believe it is. So that overhead line is going to come out, and that'll be underground. Electric crews worked with the street department in the end of September to remove some large trees that were on their FEMA list. The utilities returned the light with the camera in it to the vendor. I'll continue to work with Jeff on this. Basically, that vendor didn't meet the promises that we were given. The communication is not going to work. That was a $4,000 investment. We're getting our money back, and we're just going to wait on that technology to catch up. I know the police department made quite an investment in that too, and it's just the cameras aren't at the resolution that we're requiring, so we felt it was better needed just to wait and let the technology catch up, and then we'll reinvest in that when there's better technology available. At 10:10 AM on September 27th, we had an operation on breaker 82 at Werner Substation. The crews found a 2,900 amp fault occurred on the 345 riser at the Douglas Substation. The Vista switch operated at Douglas Sub due to the fault isolating the substation. Crews reset the Vista, and they re-energized all the substation feeders. Electric crews set two poles at FX Auto. The setting pole needs to be replaced, it tested bad, so that's why they're doing that work. The PSC extended the residential disconnect order again to November 1st. The utilities will continue to fill out the necessary required papers to the PSC. If they do not extend the order, the utilities can start to disconnect water customers for non-payment. Although that moratorium speaks to electric customers, if the PSC does not extend it, we can start to disconnect the water customers, so. The utilities received its new bucket truck built by utility sales, and with that, the utility commission approved donating our small bucket truck to the street department. The utility commission also approved donating a failed Siemens regulator to NWTC. That saves us about $3,000 in shipping, so just to get rid of that one failed piece of equipment. Siemens wouldn't take it back, they're building us a new regulator. So I reached out to NWTC, they'll be accepting that, they'll come and pick that up for us. The utilities is also working with the community-covered food pantry. We've always had available in the past the holiday light program, and due to our office being closed, we decided to reach out to them and see if they would give out the lights and accepting of the food, and see how that worked this year. So we're going to get that flyer out right away, so anybody can donate food and then get those LED lights that the utilities provides for that program. It's always been really well-received. It's just difficult, because without our office open, we didn't know how we were going to meet that need for the community, but they, they were very receptive to having a day for the morning for those individuals to donate food, so. And I'd also like to recognize Tracy Strong in our office, she's been at the utilities for eight years of service. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Bessett. You guys did have a busy month. All right, we'll move on to the Director of Public Services, Mr. Hearth.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, most people do know, but I want to remind everybody that we started, we started curbside leaf and brush pickup this week. It will continue throughout the city through November 20th. Please reference the map on Facebook and on the city's website to see which zones we'll be in and which specific weeks coming forward. And just as a reminder, the compost materials should be placed below or into the curb, while brush should be placed in no more than six-foot lengths perpendicular to the street. Please keep it separate. I see a lot of situations when I drive around town, everybody's got, or some people have their brush and their compost mixed up together. That wastes our time, because then we've got to try to separate that, but please keep that separate as we come around and pick that up. There are a few street construction projects finishing up. First of all, the city's railroad project on High Street. I don't have a timeline yet when they're going to be finished up, but I'm hoping that our contractor will finish that up, and we may be able to open it up within the next week. Also, not one of our projects, but Wapaka County Highway Department is working with Canadian National in reconstructing Shawno Street Railroad Crossing. I just looked before the meeting, I still see the barricades were still up before our meeting here tonight, so I anticipate they're going to be opening that up tomorrow. I don't know if it's going to be in the morning, or afternoon, or whatever, but I anticipate it's going to be opened up tomorrow, so that'd be really good to see that improvement. On the recreation side, Ginger Arnt, our recreation superintendent, has been working with the New London Public Library for a Hatton Park Halloween Story Walk. We're not doing our haunted trail like we usually do, so Ginger did a great job in working with the library and kind of doing something else that creates social distancing, and it's basically a story walk for families with young children to walk through the park and read a Halloween story while enjoying the great fall colors. So if you do have young children or grandchildren, go check it out. It's going to be set up this Saturday and available for about a month. And then lastly, I want to congratulate Finance Director Judy Racky. She's been elected to be on the Board of Directors for SIDNIC. SIDNIC is our city's insurance company. It's a insurance company that only insures cities, villages, and it's a great honor for people around the state and other municipalities to make the election, and I want to congratulate Judy on that, so, congratulations. And that's it.
Thank you, Chad. Congratulations, Judy.
Thank you.
We'll move on to...
Mayor Burke?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask somebody on the Wapaka County Highway Committee, plan on that being the Shawno Street crossing being closed all through tomorrow, too.
All tomorrow.
Okay.
Sign up there, it says 13th and the 14th, so.
Yeah.
Plan on taking the, what do you call it, the roundabout?
The dark?
The bypass, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Zog.
Plan it being closed all day tomorrow.
Thank you. Police chief, Mr. Schlitter?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tom Elders completed two years as our school resource officer this last month, so he'll continue to do it in his third year. Also, Neuroscience Group of Appleton dropped off some bike helmets they donated to us to hand out to children in our community to keep them safe, so if you happen to have a child that needs a bike helmet, we got...